And we are the Coalition Loud and Proud, Outrage Porn Free, Civilly Disobedient Media Broadcasting, live on the worldwide Coalition Radio Network, well, at CoalitionRadioNetwork.com, Facebook.com/theCoalitionRadio, on the mighty, mighty Twitter, @Coalition_Radio, the original mothership at CoalitionRadio.us, where there are no less than almost eight years of interviews. The new website, of course, CoalitionRadioNetwork.com, encompassing now, we're up to about seven shows on a weekly or monthly basis. Our goal is to do nothing less than to challenge, if you will, the established television networks here in Rhode Island with challenging discussions of third rail political issues, fun in terms of restaurants, reviews, and restaurant, the restaurant business analysis, golfing, rewarding conversations with Tina Peterson, and the award-winning Ramp Show, Real Access Motivates Progress. So it's a new approach to fix, I believe, an old problem, the inadequacy and the inability of conventional media to really cover issues in the level, the depth, the analysis, the nuance that Rhode Islanders deserve. As part of that, we reach out routinely to the political community. If this is your first time joining us, we host folks from virtually every political stripe. That's why it's called the Coalition, because the sense here is that if we get folks to have a conversation, outrage porn free, but yet civilly disobedient conversation about issues that are sometimes intentionally designed to divide us, if we find common ground, as I believe exists between libertarians like myself, progressives, folks who may have a different perspective on an issue, but have the same desires, the same goals in sight. As I like to say, if we can spend the next couple of years fixing all the problems that we agree on, then perhaps in maybe about 10 years when we're done and the world's a better place, then we can get back to fighting with each other and tweaking each other and making fun of each other. But in the meantime, let's not let establishment powers divide people. Let's simply work as if they don't exist. Let's solve problems in the community with neither the ascent or the control of quote-unquote "the ruling bodies," who quite frankly have brought us to a very difficult time in our state's history. Never better evidenced, never more destructively evidenced than today, when a press conference, the weekly press conference that focuses on the issues of the state and responding to the COVID-19 crisis, for political reasons, were ignored by both the existing governor and, as we like to say, the governor waiting. That's how low we've sunk. When the outgoing powers and the incoming powers simply can't even agree to be on a stage together, folks, we're in trouble. But let's look past that tonight. Let's have a conversation about one of my favorite places in the world, Pawtucket, Rhode Island. An analogy I drew a number of years ago when I had the now mayor of Pawtucket, Rhode Island, Mr. Donald Grebien on, the analogy I drew was that if Providence is, if you will, the Manhattan of Rhode Island, then Pawtucket is the Brooklyn of Rhode Island. Same contentious attitude, same great people, same opportunities. And in the years that followed, since I had that initial conversation with him, Brooklyn has very much come into its own. Neighborhoods that were just tough have become home to vibrant communities. Interestingly enough, still able to maintain the diversity that truly is Brooklyn, far so less Manhattan these days, by the way, a home to the arts, a home to restaurants, a home to real communities, neighborhoods. Now Rhode Island is a state of neighborhoods. We talk about Pawtucket, we talk about Providence, we talk about Cranston, even Cumberland, as bland as my hometown is. There are neighborhoods and communities within them that we celebrate and quite frankly make life worth living around here. So the goal of tonight is to have a conversation about the future of Pawtucket. We'll touch on this stadium issue. The rule here is always polite, intense conversation, where, if you will, in a matter that seems unlikely in most political conversations these days, individual opinions are respected. Doesn't mean we won't try and change each other's opinions, but they're respected. And that's the tenor of the conversation that we aim to keep here. Alexis Schuessy is here tonight. She represents Pawtucket. She's going to tell us a little bit about herself, her background, and how she came to elected office. Alexis, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much, Pat. It is rare as a city councillor to get an opportunity to sort of speak to a wider audience. And I know many people in Rhode Island, not just people that live in Pawtucket, but many folks in Rhode Island love Pawtucket for a variety of reasons. And I'm here to share that love, because that's why I ran. A little bit about me, I grew up in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I am the daughter of a former college professor and a marketing professional. They both still live in the South. My sister lives down there too. And I came up to Boston to go to school. I went to art school at Emerson College, graduated there, got some jobs in the tech industry, and then I bounced back to arts administration and then back to tech. But then, after years of living in greater Boston, I found myself in a tough financial spot, because a lot of folks of my age, in my generation, we've gotten a little priced out of the housing market. And that coincided with the time that I met someone who happened to live in Pawtucket at the time, and kept coming back and kept coming back and kept coming back until I realized that I should just stay for a while and settle roots, because it feels great to be here. And I couldn't imagine being anywhere else right now than Pawtucket, Rhode Island. Honestly, it is a pleasure to serve on the council. It was a very interesting election cycle, to say the least. And I'm just, I'm jazzed to get going and to learn new things and to try to build communities and just empower communities and people in the neighborhoods where I live. So I'm really excited to be here, and thank you so much for having me.
I'm fascinated. Why Pawtucket as opposed to, say, Providence? Yeah, there's, and again, I'd love your reaction to my analogy if you still think it's accurate. But what was it about Pawtucket is closer proximity to Boston, or was it just sort of its own, does it literally have its own vibe?
I think your assessment is absolutely correct. You know, I, being someone that, I studied theater. That was my undergraduate education, acting and directing mainly. And I never saw myself as being someone that wanted to go to Manhattan, or move to LA, or be in any one of those major metros where I didn't think that I would get a good night's rest. And so, when deciding to kind of settle down, I felt like living in a community like Pawtucket, where it is a working-class town with an incredibly vibrant art scene, incredible history, and just a place that, you know, felt much more like a place where I could really get to know my neighbors and connect with folks. It didn't feel transient in a lot of ways that I felt when I was living in the Boston area. I always felt like I would meet great neighbors, I would meet great people, and then folks would move on to their next location. And here in Pawtucket, I feel like I can really connect with folks. And as an artist myself, I really think that Pawtucket is a special place, especially for local artists, small business owners, folks that are establishing themselves. And, you know, folks have lived here for generations, but it's still a very welcoming community, especially for folks that appreciate diversity and appreciate living in a place where we're not trying to just be one thing. We're open to so much. And I love my neighbors, I love my town.
Now, you represent, I believe, let me see if I have this straight, you represent the Fourth Ward?
The Fourth Ward.
Okay. So tell us about your community within the community. What are some of the bright spots? Give me a couple of places that you like to hang in terms of whether it be restaurants, wherever. I'm not going to put you on the spot and ask you your favorite, but give us a couple of ideas. If I was to visit the Fourth Ward, what would I expect? What are the strengths? What are the challenges? And what's some local flavor that I could enjoy?
Yeah, I mean, folks come to the Fourth Ward from all over New England to go to the Rhodey Hen. It's a local breakfast joint, The Right Spot, Modern Diner, all of these places are nestled into the Fourth Ward, because it hugs both sides of the river. So you have sort of the highway running through it, and then it goes from Quality Hill down through Breveridge Hill Ave. And then on the other side of the river, it covers a portion of Oak Hill. So you have two, you mean, you have the old, you have East Pawtucket and West Pawtucket coming together, because the Division Street Bridge is what really brought both sides of the ward into one. So definitely, those restaurants are some of my favorites. I also love, just right on the crest, it's not in the Fourth Ward, but if you're looking for local flora, Jordan's Jungle is right nearby. And obviously, with Valentine's Day just behind us, it was a busy weekend there. A great place to buy plants, plant food, everything else. If you're into gardening, it's amazing. And although it's not in my ward, I live right next to downtown. You know, I can see City Hall from my window. And so I am frequently just popping down the street past the Armory to go to local shops like Circuit BMX. I just recently got a motorized scooter, and so I went and got a helmet there, Top Shelf Vintage Company for vintage clothes, like all sorts of cool shops, just in my, like, .25 mile radius.
Now, that's outstanding. There's, I've gotten to know through a couple of associates, friends, and politicians. Ms. Bento, of course, has been a provocative advocate for the Verdiend community in Pawtucket. And I've been introduced to a lot of folks. There's a common conception, and it's certainly a misconception, that by driving down Newport Ave and seeing abandoned shops there, and some of the challenges that Newport Ave faces, that commerce and the community are on the wane in Pawtucket. And I can tell you from personal experience, because of the variety of communities, that couldn't be further from the truth, that there is great opportunity in Pawtucket. It's more affordable, as you pointed out, it's more affordable to rent, it's more affordable for space. My daughter's an artist as well, and she's done some virtual shows from Studio Space in downtown Pawtucket. Again, it's, there's great opportunity there. And I'm going to put a challenge to you, if there are businesses in your community that want to come on our little network and engage in what we lovingly refer to as shameless self-promotion, it's available, the time is available, it's free, and I'll do everything we can with our little network here, you know, to promote Rhode Island businesses, supporting Rhode Islanders, and of course, Rhode Islanders supporting Rhode Island businesses. It's, there's a synchronicity there, if you will, that has to, has to be promoted, because too often, we don't know, because we're in our own little hives, if you will, these days with the Rona and everything else going on, we're not aware of some great opportunities that exist sometimes in our neighborhood, or just a short drive, or a short ripper away. So I, you know, very often, because of the politics that I've been involved in, there are those who, one person in particular, who believes that I'm not bullish on Pawtucket. And I believe in organic growth based on communities, existing communities, because to me, economic growth should be, benefit the people who currently live in Pawtucket, and not folks from out of town, not folks who are simply opportunistic. And we'll cover that a little later in the show, but I think you and I agree on that. I think intuitively, I sense that you are a huge booster for the community, which is to your credit, why you've been willing to jump in. Talk to me about the election, just a little bit, because I'm not big on handicap elections, but as an outsider, someone who lives in Cumberland, someone who spends a lot of time in Pawtucket and Providence, it strikes me that sort of the winds of change have kind of blown down Newport Avenue and Smithfield Avenue here in Pawtucket. Is that a fair assessment? And what went on during the elections?
I think it has. I think at some point, like you mentioned, communities that have strength built up, but maybe haven't exhibited that strength for a while, start to push positive change forward. And I think for me and for the other two new councillors that got elected, it was, I mean, first off, it's a year where I don't think we could have imagined running during a stranger period in history, where knocking on doors is not just inconvenient, but it's incredibly dangerous. And so how, the big question was, when I was announcing, you know, how do I get to know my neighbors in a time when face-to-face interaction, door-to-door interaction, really wasn't the safest bet? And it was thanks to members of the community who really saw maybe in me things that I didn't even see in myself at the time, as a changemaker, or as someone that would bring good ideas, creative ideas, and new energy to City Hall. They gave me both my own boost of confidence to stay in the game, and also helped really turn the tide using mail ballots. I thought that my election was going to be close, but I was running against a 34-year incumbent, you know, a man that has been serving 34 consecutive years since he was 38 years old. I'm 34 right now. And so, it was not really, I think if someone was betting in Vegas, they would not have put money on me to come through on this. But folks, I think the internet helped me out. I think people that Googled me when they got their mail ballots, or maybe saw information about my platform, and read The Valley Breeze in terms of the policies that I was trying to bring forward, like green initiatives when it comes to waste management, all of those things resonated with people. And they really didn't strike a political chord. It was more about how can we make the city greener, how can we build our community stronger, and how can we elevate the voices of community members that have long been either forgotten or told to be quiet, because folks don't like what they say, or don't like their views? And it's, I serve the people. I don't serve anyone else. And being an outsider, I guess, kind of served me well in this election, which is rare.
No, because it affords you the opportunity to start really with a fresh slate. I mean, you're not working with a lifetime of, when I use the word prejudice, I don't mean it in the conventional racial sense. I mean, it's just in the sense of a history there. You've clearly made a commitment to the community on multiple levels. You know, it is your home. And you were active in the community in the run-up to the election, and your willingness to reach out to a variety of communities, I mean, that's where we've seen it, right? I mean, we, we're not talking about, you know, the annual Christmas tree lighting here or anything else like that. There are a variety of communities who have contentious relationships with the, what's left of the existing old power base, and including a number of municipal departments, not the least of which is the Pawtucket Police Department. And I'll use the term "battled Pawtucket Police Department" because of, again, this contentious relationship. And, you know, it brings up really generational issues of how do you police a community that sees, and these are my words, not yours, I want to be very careful with that, but from my reflection as an outsider as well, sees the Pawtucket Police Department as an invading force, and very often not in sync with local community groups. And that's troubling, because, again, these are the folks who are, you know, families that have been there for generations, families who made their own investment in the community, families who stuck around when things were tough, when it would be very easy just to go elsewhere. And these are community members who are volunteers, who show up for town council meetings, who, you know, who band together in times of economic difficulty. I mean, the city of Pawtucket, despite having some great people and outstanding opportunities, is not a wealthy community. There's a handful of neighborhoods that are part of your district that have done well, and God bless them, because they've been willing to stay in Pawtucket as well. It would've been very easy for a number of them to just go over the border and, you know, on the Tony East Side and be in Providence, and, you know, and not stick around and not continue their investment. So in your mind, right now, what are the biggest challenges facing the city, from your perspective as a councilperson, and projects that you are looking to embark upon during your tenure?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think if I had to choose just the first one, from a priority perspective, it would be rebuilding that trust, because a community that does not trust its leadership, whether that is at the City Hall level, whether that's the City Council, whether it's the Police Department, if there is a dynamic where those in power are continually disempowering and making the voices of the constituents not heard, or saying that their problems don't matter, then I wonder, you know, what does matter? Like, what is the point, then, of serving in public office if not to bring positive momentum and positive drive to the community? And I am not someone that plays favorites in any context, but I can see how a community that has these issues now feels like, well, what's the point of going to a City Hall meeting? What's the point of putting in public input? Why would I even bother? Because they haven't listened to me for however many years, why are they going to listen now? And they have a good point. So I have a challenge to be proactive about the way I'm communicating what goes on at council meetings and what's happening with the administration. And not only that, but trying to make sure that that information is accessible to everyone in my district. And that could be language accessibility, that could be the literal accessibility of the Town Hall or City Hall building, which, you know, if you're in a wheelchair, you can't really get into that building very well, and parts of it are just falling apart. And it doesn't feel like a place where I'd want to work or get business done every day. So how, with the small budgets that we have, with the community that we serve, how can we still offer incredible service as a city, but also recognize that the damage and the harms that have been done throughout history that I can't even speak to, because I wasn't even here, how can we start to actually listen? And how can leaders be accountable for that? I believe in radical transparency, in terms of my role, in terms of, you know, folks having access to me as their councillor. And so it's, I'm trying to figure out what is the most streamlined way that I can communicate directly with constituents and have them communicate back, that doesn't cause them to waste hours and hours of their time, and that they can get efficient, effective service from both me and from the city whenever they need it. And people take their concerns seriously. I think that is, and beyond that, obviously, I knew coming in that huge projects like Tidewater Landing were going to directly impact my district in particular. And I had to throw my hat in the ring to make sure that I could get a seat at the table and try to figure out what the heck is going on.
Right. No, that's refreshingly honest, because for a lot of folks, there hasn't been a seat at the table for a very long time. And I know a number of folks in the community who felt, quite frankly, they've been pandered to, and said that, you know, we'll take care of everything, everything will be fine, don't you worry, you know, fill in the blanks, when everything really isn't fine, is it? And I'm not trying to single out Pawtucket. I mean, cities, the issues that your city is facing, cities across America are facing, and they've only been exacerbated by, obviously, the pandemic. It, you know, tax, sales tax collections are down in a lot of places. Property tax collections are difficult when folks can't afford to make the rent. You know, I fear for our retail landscape, the twin, if you will, the twin powers of the internet, the diminution, if you will, of bricks and mortar, in exchange for, if you will, a chance at the community. And then you follow up with, how do you afford to run a retail bricks and mortar business?
Exactly.
You know, it's, one of the things that Providence has been able to do, less successfully under the current administration, but certainly successfully under prior administrations, has been to recognize that downtown communities are no longer places of commerce, per se, but they're places of entertainment. And that entertainment, then, has the halo effect of bringing residential life to downtown. Pawtucket, of course, has got multiple downtowns. You know, you've got the traditional, the Rotary, you've got Newport Avenue, you've got Smithfield. What's going right and what's, where do you think the biggest challenges are in terms of small business and the economy?
Yeah, I, and this is probably also kind of a naive answer, so forgive me, but one thing that blows my mind, because again, I grew up in the South, and I had to drive a long time everywhere to get places I need to go. And driving in Rhode Island is, one, not something that people that live or work here like to do, especially when it comes to, you know, trying a new restaurant, or trying a new experience. Like, driving is both incredibly dangerous, because of, like, I live right at the S-curve, one of the most dangerous intersections or areas of 95 in the country. And not only that, but the Rotary itself, I can't tell you how many friends of mine and sort of like my peers just won't come, because they hate driving through the city. There's nowhere to park, there's nowhere to like, and there's not really a central area. So that's sort of my answer to your question, is the fact that with small businesses, what I'm seeing right now is I'm seeing like a great small business open up on one side of the city, and then something else open up, you know, 15 minutes away, kind of on the other side, nestled in, close to, I don't know, north Providence. And so we don't have these centralized districts anymore, where people can come, park, walk around, shop. We don't have a Hope Street. We don't, we have like little bits of life and livelihood everywhere, but then with the, with the lack of co-location in one spot, it's hard to convince people to go get coffee on one side of the city and then drive to their favorite shop on the other. So how do we kind of get our community to coalesce around geographic regions that we can really invest in, and then bring the energy of these small businesses and ask them to come and move into, back into downtown, or liven up this particular square, this block, so it becomes, in itself, it can grow more organically than just one good shop?
Right. And you used the word organically, that's critical. I'm old enough to remember, as a very young person, when Greenwich Village was kind of hop, hopping, it was hip, if you will, to use the vernacular, in New York City. And I've always been a fan of watching neighborhoods, sort of the ebb and flow of a lifestyle. And then eventually Greenwich Village became a tourist trap. And when I was a youth, I hung out a lot in a neighborhood called Soho in Tribeca in lower Manhattan. I used to joke, I would never go out above Houston Street, and I'd never go out below Canal Street. That was sort of very much a 1980s, if you will, punk ethos, happening in that, with a healthy mix of art. Now, of course, those neighborhoods have gotten blown up, they've sort of become caricatures. And so, I wasn't a lot of, let's get back to the Brooklyn analogy, a lot of that energy, a lot of those creative forces moved by necessity into Brooklyn. And what Brooklyn had at the time, less so now, because it's going through its own evolution, was inexpensive manufacturing space. It had relatively reasonable rents, relative, of course, to the community that was facing that sort of generic flight, Manhattan, and of course, you know, a strong presence of art, and a strong presence of schools and universities. And that's sort of the mix that made Providence become the Renaissance City. And I believe that's the sort of mix that can happen to make Pawtucket its own Renaissance City. You know, how do you get folks, how do you, that sort of twin hurdle of property taxes and rent affordability, which go hand in hand, right? um, rent affordability, which go hand in hand, right? I mean, it is, you've got out of control property taxes. It makes it difficult to find the reasonable rents. And that's, you know, there is almost a a formula now. We recognize a formula where artists move, then coffee shops seem to go, and then restaurants follow. And then eventually the suburban folks like me come in and ruin it all, right? So, but but there was that precious period of time, if you will, where there's a chemistry to a neighborhood. Uh, that is completely organic. It can't just be conjured up. I there's a, there's a neighborhood in Norwalk, Connecticut, of all places. They called it Sono. And they decided they were going to make it an arts community. Wait, it doesn't happen that way. You can't use uh the very tax incentives and the very type of corporate influx that is quote unquote, going to create this arts community is very often the one that destroys it because you know, I, art artist communities live on. Well, it it it's a different, it's a different style. It's a different, it's a different cost basis. It's a, it's a different ethos. So how, you know, you've got the central challenge here. And I, first of all, it's it's unfair of me in one sense to put you on the hot seat. I'm not going to, because you are now immersing yourself literally as we speak. And you're seeing how the sausage is made in Pawtucket, really as we speak. You're new to the camp. And so it strikes me that the central conflict is cost of government and cost of property taxes versus affordability to create that mix that maintains a community's viability, but at the same time brings in fresh blood, fresh energy, fresh entrepreneurial skill. Uh, have you seen the, have you been able to immerse yourself in the budget yet or or take a comprehensive look at property taxes yet?
Uh, we're getting a, we're getting a look right now, actually. So I'll have more info the next time I come on because we're about to start the budget talks and we're about one point, I think, 1.6 uh million dollar deficit that we're trying to resolve through either a supplemental tax increase or, you know, I I haven't seen any other like proposals yet as to how to fix that gap, but I also want folks to know that like I take this job really seriously and I do plan to interrogate that budget beyond just, you know, seeing pie charts on paper because I've worked in in public companies, very large private companies. I have been in boardrooms solving these problems for almost a decade now, but because I don't look and sound and act like your standard business guy that's sitting in these boardrooms, people are like, well, who are you? And I'm like, no, I've I've done this before. I know how to figure out ways to to like solve the problems on both ends, but you gotta take me seriously. You gotta, you gotta give me access to the information. Don't withhold things from me because then I can't make a proper decision. And Pawtucket is particularly susceptible, I think, to the influx of folks from Massachusetts who are going to see this border town as a place to move if they're going to be a permanent remote worker. And then what's going to happen? When folks unload their properties here and cash out and we just become a town where everyone works inside their second bedroom and like, that doesn't feel like a community to me. That doesn't feel like a place where I want to live, even though I, because I've tried to escape those places now for 10 years. I want to, I want to live somewhere where people want to like be a neighbor, not just have a house that also serves as their office, that also serves as their side hustle palace. You know what I mean? Like
Right.
Doesn't make sense to me.
No, and that is the central challenge of urban planning. That is the central challenge of medium sized to smaller cities like Pawtucket. Uh, because again, the the question is, who is economic development geared towards? The people who live there now, who've lived there for generations, who are part of a vibrant community? Or people that would represent an influx to take advantage of facilities that never existed for the folks who are there now, but simultaneously uh, prices a lot of those folks right out of the market. Of course, it's the G word, gentrification. Uh, you know, you, again, if if you're trying to create a Pawtucket that five years from now or 10 years now looks nothing like that and is becomes quote unquote, the cursed bedroom community. And I live in a bedroom community, believe me. It ain't always that exciting. And I, but I knew I was in trouble and I love Cumberland and there's great people there, but I I knew I was in trouble 30 years ago when I asked my new neighbor where the, where where some really good pieces and understand I'm from New York City, right? They right out, and my family grew up right outside. And they told me Papa Gino's and I was like, Ruro, we got a, we Houston, we got a problem. They know, no offense at Papa Gino's, but you know, I think you and I know what we're talking about here. Um, yeah, I, so I, and I, if I had an answer for that, neither of us would be sitting here. We'd be implementing that. But I applaud the fact that your sensibility is there because you know, it is, if you're a fan of The Simpsons, uh, if you're, if you're a certain age, uh, the song 76 Trombones is all about a movie where a chaser came into town and promised that every boy needs a band. And if you're of a a much younger age, the uh, the song monorail, monorail.
Monorail, monorail.
Then you know.
Gentrified monorail.
Right. Then you know that communities and and um a physicist friend of mine, um, Dr. Peter Nightingale, who's an activist in the anti-war community that I've gotten to know, he's got a great term for it. He calls it economic racism. We've seen what happens in what's happened in Central Falls with the um and I was there when, you know, I was living in the area when it was happening and I was naive to it myself. The the prison was going to save Central Falls. To say that that's been an absolute failure on every level would be an understatement, I believe. And the same prom, the same promises that weren't kept, the same ancillary businesses that were going to develop never happened. And what you've got is you've got a mess and you've got a poorly run just racist mess there. And 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 we, the the city does not see a fair return on it. And the city now has become ironically, a city like Central Falls has become a haven for the inhumane treatment of prisoners out of a really warped federal policy. So essentially what they're doing is they're offloading all their problems into a city like CF and it's it's been nothing but a drain on the community. Uh, and that's my opinion, but I'm not sure what yours is, but it's 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 not good. So, you know, so so the budget, the budget is coming up. What is this controversy surrounding uh, the mayor? And and I know this is very unclear. This is a developing story, but the mayor seems obsessed, I guess, with getting some of the dough, RME, the scuttle, the dollars out of the school system, back into the, how did, what's happening with that? If you could explain that to me at any level, I'd be grateful.
Yeah, great question because it was a, it was a shock to me and it happened over the course of two city council meetings, you know, two of my first ones and um, you know, as they say baptism by fire, right? Like you're thrown right into the, right at the start. So uh, originally the deficit that was presented to us was closer to two, I think, 2.8, between 2.6 or 2.8 million. And there, because our stool committee operates completely separately, like they handle their their whole budget. There's an independent body. Um, it was proposed that a a surplus because Pawtucket's schools were the only district that were closed, a surplus that did not impact education or was never, I guess, budgeted towards education. It was more of like I guess, in the sense of rainy day fund type of uh pocket was would, we would ask if it was, I guess, legal or financially possible even to get some of that surplus to cover the deficit that the city had run up uh, that they say was due to, you know, COVID and hiring new staff and figuring out how do we um, do outreach? How do we do all the things necessary to help? Because Central Falls and Pawtucket obviously was some of the highest population density in the United States. We just, we, we had to, we've had to constantly react. Um, and things have not ever slowed down in terms of COVID rates here. So when they said that there was this chance or I guess move, um, the counselor pro temp, uh, counselor Mercer said that he was going to send correspondence to the committee and ask about the possibilities of this. Um, it didn't take long. I guess it took about two weeks and some folks to say that yes, that this was in fact both possible and that they were willing to do this. So now we're still in a budget crisis, but I guess that 1.2 or something that was brought over is going to be applied to the current deficit with still the potential of a supplemental tax increase that wouldn't be, that is now less than what they would have proposed if they couldn't get that um from the committee's fund or the committee's like rainy day bucket because I, the what was stated at the city council meeting was that if the government, if the city of Pawtucket had reached into its emergency coffers, then it would have put us in a situation to have a, you know, a lower credit rating, all of the things that make it hard to, I guess, you know, work and function and and access loans and property. But it has been interesting to see how fast that has moved and also how um quickly we're trying to to get together to figure out, well, what is the next step then? We're still in the hole. Sure, we've got about half of that covered. At this point, uh, most of city hall has been on work share, so they've been closed every Friday. So it's been four days a week. Um, they are not operating at peak capacity. Um, and it is causing a strain on everyone. It's causing a strain on city workers. It's causing a strain on city departments that would normally be better. And they're trying valiantly to keep working, especially now in winter. You know, it's one of the busiest times for places like DPW and 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 um, folks to be readily accessible. I just, I need to figure out over the course of the next few weeks as we're talking about this new budget, why we are not having more conversations around what does this budget really entail? Like, are we talking about uh, pension, the pension fund being overblown? Are we talking about new hires because of COVID? Are we talking about um, obviously the the situation like with police, like what? Because our budget really is 30% uh or more allocated to the police department and I, I just need more info to make better decisions on this. And there, it's really hard for them to be transparent. And I would much rather us operate with all of the data on the table and be honest about the ways that we can have better fiscal responsibility going forward and attack the issues that are really affecting the community right now. Not operate like we were 10 years ago, but think proactively because we shouldn't have these fights every year. We shouldn't be budgeting just one year at a time and hoping that things are going to work out. Okay, you gotta have longer term planning and you gotta be responsive to the community's needs at this present time, not what you think they need or or what they might need down the line. We have to figure out how to help people now or else folks are going to get priced out. They're not going to be able to find work and they're going to have to leave and we don't want that. I want people to stay. I want people that live here to be given the opportunity to reinvest and to experience some of the great things that are coming. Uh, because I think that Renaissance is happening. Like, we just got a coffee shop opened and that to me is like a great sign. We just got uh local high schoolers that went to Tolman. They opened up their own sustainability shop, um, based on what they had learned when they lived out in LA for a little bit. And I love that energy because they're going to help me talk to other local businesses about composting and hopefully start these small changes. Um, and they're staying, right? Like, high schoolers wanted to build a business here, not in Providence, not up in Massachusetts or in Boston. They wanted to do it here and I credit them for that. And I want to figure out ways to keep supporting people like them. Because otherwise, what's it going to be? It's, are people just going to buy up these properties and turn them on to luxury condos? I don't know.
Right. Well, one of the, one of the more interesting aspects of the Vincent A. Buddy we got a little overlap there. Vincent A. Buddy Cianci regime was again, uh, and this is predates your living here in in uh, in Rhode Island. But again, he recognized or let's just say people around him, and then ultimately he recognized that uh downtown communities, I mentioned in the run up to the show, were not really going to be centers of commerce anymore. They were going to become centers of entertainment. And in doing so, they were able to develop that critical mass between the arts uh, that, you know, it it's a pretty simple formula at this point. We all know we, if uh, if you've got artists working downtown and and it's happening, it's happening at Pawtucket, it's happening in Central Falls, interestingly enough. Uh, if you've got artists working downtown, uh, they, it's the capitalistic circle of life. I know that'll make some people insane, but ultimately they spend money where they where they work. And so all of a sudden, you're hiring people in the neighborhood, sometimes part time, sometimes full time. You're going out to lunch in the neighborhood. Uh, it's called the multiplier effect in economics. And um, by the way, if you, if you say hi to Don for me, tell him the offer for a crash course in economics is still available.
I will absolutely offer that.
But the multiplier effect is a critical part of urban planning, very, very often unrecognized. And it's it's very simple. It's people in a community. If they engage in commerce, spend money in that community, affording other residents in that community to respend the money and keep the money within the community as it cycles back and forth like a pinball machine between different businesses. The minute that money leaves the community, it's lost forever. And this is going to be important for our later conversation, but but it's it's, and it seems simple, right? But it's it's anything but, uh, you know, and so one of the things that was the hallmark of the Renaissance city was they created sales tax free zones so that folks could sell their artwork without charging sales tax. Uh, and it was a spur to economic development. Because then you had the clustering effect where people who are artists said, okay, I got a community that's, you know, we're, we're, people are working hard to find me space and Lord knows there's enough abandoned space in Pawtucket. Um, where where people can work. And I mean that in the best possible way. I mean, if you look behind me right now, I'm in a mill building in Providence. Um, you know, I keep it local and and, you know, it's it's, you can't really tell, but it's you know, if you like mill space, it's the mill space of my dreams. High ceilings, exposed brick hardwood floors, perfect for a small studio. Um, because unlike the big radio stations, our studio is still open. Sorry. Uh, but, but, but as a result, you know, I'm I'm near the post office and, you know, I spend money in 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 this little neighborhood now. And not enormous amount, but again, it's it's the uh, the cumulative effect of bringing business in. So when you see art moving into the city and then you start to see performances and the beauty of of art is that it can be virtual. Uh, you know, it it, we look forward to a time, hopefully in the near future, where people can stream down the the center downtown, if you will, of Pawtucket and go to a number of the art, little arts installations that popped up in these older buildings downtown. Uh, and then forge around for someplace to eat lunch without having to drive and and creating a a a economic stability mixed in without having to incur the extra costs and the if effective driving, 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 driving. I'm with you on that. I I, it's funny, as a libertarian, I I just, I I look to economics as really the the centerpiece of urban planning. So I, you know, it's it's, maybe that's where the, because I would imagine part, and I, you know, I'll get off my my soapbox here. How much of your efforts and the efforts of the newer members of the council are going to be looking towards bloat and savings? Because the 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 political halls of Rhode Island are rife with stories of Pawtucket just uh, wasting money. Is that, is that attitude there right now to to tackle this budget at that kind of organic level?
It's, it's tough to say because again, what troubles me the most is how often um data is aggregated to the point of not being useful to analyze. Uh, my father was actually an economics professor, so I love talking economics because for me as well, um, the, these issues go hand in hand. And while I identify as a Democrat because I grew up in the South and like there's much more clear division, uh, Rhode Island is a very strange place to uh, I call myself more of a progressive than anything else, just because I believe in progress. And with these issues on, it it's hard to tell even with the data that we've been given so far where that bloat is. So it's key, it's staying on the ball to keep asking the right questions, to keep getting answers, even if they, even if it takes a little bit of digging because I have personally seen um, through my own experiences, even just trying to sign my own paperwork to become a city counselor legally, how um, through my own experiences, even just trying to sign my own paperwork to become a city councillor legally, how how it feels like walking into City Hall in Pawtucket is like walking into a a place that was operating twenty years ago, like everything is still pen and paper. Um, you try to make a an appointment on the website, which is their way of trying to, you know, keep people safe by having by appointment thing, but the website doesn't even work. You can't even make an appointment on the site and I've told several people that work there that I'm troubled by this and it takes days or weeks for things to get done. And so I don't think there's also a clear division um in my understanding of where responsibilities for these things lie. And at the end of the day, I think that falls on the the leaders of the administration to solve them and to solve them in a transparent way and to really answer the questions that we have with data and with facts and not try to just tell a shiny story about how we're going to be a city like how we're gonna get a Renaissance one day or how things are looking up. Like it takes concerted effort and discipline from a budgetary standpoint to make this progress happen. And say everyone in Pawtucket decides to make an online business and the brick and mortar is closed. There is no way for the city then to generate any revenue from commerce that will come in and out through sales on Etsy, through sales on whatever platform, selling art, whatever the case might be. And while that might be fine for the people that are living there and I hope people earn the wages that they should for their work. It does put the city in a very strange spot because we need to get up to speed on these um, on streamlining these things like yesterday. It's it's not a question of what will we do two years from now. It's how can we make it easier, more accessible and help people understand how they can start a small business, what what it takes, how they can get good loans, how they can work with Small Business Association and the SBA type loans, how they can move from becoming a renter to a homeowner, like all of these things, I think the city could do a better job promoting, but it, you know, people consider governing a variety of things. I think I come to try to voice the concerns of the people and get the city to come to creative solutions, but that involves them also coming to the table and recognizing that we have to, even if folks are uncomfortable with it, we have to move in the direction of a city that is making better decisions to save money for taxpayers and to save money for the city itself, or else we're going to be in the same position eight months from now. And not only that, uh, you know, last March, we had one of the most devastating fires Rhode Island has ever seen. Um, like a whole swath of mill buildings were destroyed on March fourteenth and fifteenth and it took Providence, Pawtucket, Central Falls, like firefighters from all over to make sure that it didn't stretch into our downtown districts, but it easily could have. And that's what happens when these buildings go vacant. We don't invest in redevelopment and we don't give people opportunities. Um, and we make it hard for them to do that and I I want to see these buildings brought up to code, fixed, people living in them, people working in them, but that that means that we have to create policy that allows it to happen and promotes it happening.
I I would add too, one, one of the knee jerk responses by mid sized cities around the country is these constant the constant refrain of targeted tax breaks towards specific developers and individual projects and in order to create, I think, a sense of fairness in economic policy. I rather than reward the few with these, you know, TIF style financing and we're going to get into the stadium in a second here. Because we're having a great, by the way, if anyone's just joining us for the first time, Alexis Shute has joined us. She is the uh, councilperson for Ward Four uh, in the in the great city of Pawtucket, AKA The Bucket uh, as I love to call it, and that's a sign of admiration, by the way. Uh, it it's 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 undergoing its own organic Renaissance. The question is, what can government do? In my humble opinion, to get out of the way to allow it to happen more easily. Um, and at the same time, what can government do so that they can simply keep the school doors open and keep the basic goods and services that are part of our expectation in American government happening. Uh, and you know, a whole nother night could probably be dedicated to the fire department, the police department. There there and and that's not to pick on Pawtucket because the challenges that Pawtucket faces are commonplace. Pension issues, educational issues. Um, by the way, I I admire the city of Pawtucket's uh, school board's response to the uh, to this nightmare we're in and they made an independent choice based on what I appears to me, a frank assessment of their ability to deliver deliver an education and they made their own decision despite a great deal of pressure from the uh, the governor and 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 individual members of the I'll call it the vast educational industry here in Rhode Island to do what they thought was best for them. You know, I sorry Gina, tough darts farmer, as they say, uh, you know, so there there's a lot of good there. The question is, how 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 do we create an environment where those the mill buildings that are still left can be re you know, can be rehabilitated, where the small property owner or the small property investor very, very often, who is a member of the community themselves. And so are who are using their own risk capital and their own sweat equity can compete on an even keel with those developers who seem to constantly get all these special breaks because they're special. Um, I I on a personal level, I would much rather see a member of 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 the Cape Girardean community uh, buying up triple deckers and renovating them, for example, I'm just using them as an example because I've met some great people in that community. Um, I mean, that because they live there. This is not just a long term tax exercise for them. They're building up and rehabilitating these for very often family members, friends uh, in the community. And so there is a a real connection and a real concern for reputation and for the the benefit of the folks in the community to to do a good job with that. So they should why, this happens in Providence all the time. It makes me insane. Politically connected types get all sorts of tax breaks from a broken city in the financial sense. Uh, and you know, for luxury housing or hotels, we then complain about the absence of affordable housing when in fact we're subsidizing people to build housing that is distinctly unaffordable. And we're shocked, we're shocked that that there's a lack of affordable housing. I mean, I I I'm hoping, you know, one of the hallmarks of of your tenure on the city council will be to fight that kind of nonsense.
I hope so too. It um there is such a stigma to just around the term affordable housing. People you know, you say it and it brings up, you know, aspects of institutionalized racism. It it brings up, you know, things in people that aren't viewing this at a realistic level, you know, if I was not blessed with um, a family that was going to uh help me figure out how to become stable in my own housing. I did figure that out myself and I got a boost uh, in a lot of ways from my privilege, but it is incredibly different to live in an area that has folks investing into not only their properties, but properties that they're building up for friends, family as investments that are permanent. Not as an outside investor seeing like a great dollar sign because you get a three decker that's going to be near a new train station or near a new soccer stadium, you know, it's um, and frankly, like I, since I only moved here five years ago, I don't know everything that went into this project because from what I can tell, it was almost like a nine or 10 year process to get the the team to like get a bid and to officially have Rhode Island soccer, professional soccer be a thing and then you know, the issues with McCoy and the issues with Apex, like all of these things have made a story that has shown me that there isn't enough transparency in these processes. While there is, I think, a good faith effort on the part of these developers to try to reach out to the community from what I've seen. There isn't enough being done and frankly, I do ask tough questions during city council meetings because um I care deeply about what is going to be happening with that. And I'm very tired of being told by um, anyone. It doesn't even have to be developers, but folks that say, well, we just haven't figured that out yet or we'd like that, but it's not, it's not the time to discuss that. That is complete BS in my opinion. It is, the time is now because if you're telling me you're going to break ground uh, now or in the fall and you do not know if your buildings are going to be LEED certified, um then do you have architects? Do you need architects? Like, if you want to say, if the answer is no, then say no to me. Don't tell me that I'm gonna like that we're gonna figure it out later. Don't tell me that this question of affordable housing is something that you'd like, but just might not be possible. Just tell me that you want a hundred percent luxury housing instead of ninety percent luxury housing. That's what I prefer to say. Like, if you want a hundred percent luxury housing, cool. You are private developers, you can do whatever you want and the city already sold you the land, but don't don't be condescending to me as a city councillor because I do know what's going on. I've been watching this for five years now and it has been incredibly hard to get real answers and now uh, I not, I only have the expectation of the expectation of real answers. I want you to tell the constituents the truth, that if there's not going to be affordable housing, that just say no. If you're not going to make sure that these buildings are up to the most recent um, environmental standards.
Right.
Tell me that, but let me then uh don't, don't try to like play nice with me. That's not why I'm here. I'm here to actually protect the community, protect the environment and make sure that uh, you don't get a free pass just because people have been treating you with kid gloves up until now because they like you.
Right. Oh, I I I I love that attitude because quite frankly, um, as someone who was very involved for almost four plus years of my life opposing both baseball stadiums and who takes great pride the fact that uh, these baseball stadiums don't uh, are not on our skyline and can look objectively to what's happening to these very same people in Worcester and seeing every one of our predictions come true.
Oh, it's awful. It's incredibly, it blows my mind.
Right. I mean, I I understand that when and this probably started right around the time you moved here, but the the Pollyannaish patronizing, obfuscating ignorant attitude of developers and those who know, the the Solons, the wise men, if you will. And it is mostly men, wise men of 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 cities like Pawtucket and Providence who would impose on these because are you ready for this? This is how things are done. Uh, it is just utter balterdash. And you know, I mean something else because let's go through a couple of the issues now. And if if we run long tonight, we can get together. I and and by the way, I would love to have you be a a a regular guest, participate at whatever level you feel comfortable in our efforts here because quite frankly, um, it's not happening anywhere else. No one is really interested in doing the deep dive in these issues, which scares the hell out of me. And if you haven't seen what's going on in Worcester, it is now the most expensive minor league baseball team stadium in American history. In a part of the community for which there is no demonstrated demand. At the city of Worcester is bearing an inordinate amount of the cost and city of Worcester is is, you know, has this, again, the same challenges that cities like Pawtucket and and New Haven and on and on and on have all over the country. Uh, and and frankly, all of that could have been here. And here's my frustration. I will give them credit for having a transparent uh, process for those two stadiums. The the underlying legislation that created this opportunity was not transparent. It's ironic that Governor Armando is cheerleading a project that is using, if you will, an approach and legislation on the federal level that was championed by the Trump administration, of whom she purports to have grave feelings towards. I'll just keep it clean here. Uh, and and ultimately, I mean, let's go down some of some of the issues. First of all, on its most superficial level in the midst of a pandemic, you've got the prospect of state government underlying, you know, essentially backstopping funds for a soccer stadium in an era in which in person sports participation may never reach its former levels, ever. We don't know.
Yeah.
I that that's that's, first of all, I just on a sheer basic practical level, they can't answer that question. And the fact that this project is going to be buttressed by retail, just what we need, more bricks and mortar retail. Yeah, as if there isn't enough competition for space, available space in Pawtucket already. So what you, you know, so I I asked the Stefan Pryor at the governor's weekly press conference that she doesn't go to anymore, uh, and I asked Lieutenant Governor McCheese, as we love to call him here on the show. I asked him, I said, so the state in the middle of a pandemic, in which time they were struggling to process properly the applications for small business relief from money that was granted by the federal government to the state of Rhode Island for specifically that purpose. They were unable to process, yet somehow magically, they were able to arrange for a combined fifty million dollars. It's always a big bunny, right? You know, why stop at fifty, by the way? Why not go a hundred, two hundred, fifty million dollars? So I asked him a simple question. Well, you claim that and we'll get into this in a second. You claim that the project will pay pay for itself. Okay, so why not issue fifty million dollars in bonds? Disseminate that money out to small business to form loans and let them, like you're going to let the tidewater people do, pay for it with their sales tax. Couldn't do that. The 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 entire premise for this stadium is flawed because it asserts that sales taxes generated by these this organization will effectively pay for the 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 grant, the money, like the bill, whatever. And I don't know of any business in America that it's allowed to keep their sales tax so that they can fund their future expansion. I, that's just not normal. They won't describe if to your concerns, the size of the TIF district because ultimately what almost always happens is that sales taxes are vacuumed up in this district, which already existed and effectively will be removed from the state budget and reallocated towards the construction of a stadium, which is a privately owned project. I have no beef if they build a project on their own money. But once again, you've got the potential for this and because no one, the other thing is no one's told me if or when this doesn't make its numbers, who backstops that missing money? Is it the city of Pawtucket? That was one of the prospects with the original baseball stadium. And if the project is, and and I'll ask you this, counselor, get off my horse because we have lots of issues to talk about with this. But if the issue, if the project is such a damn good one, why aren't private banks stepping up to privately financed? And by the way, are there any personal guarantees in place by the owners of Fortuitous Partners to backstop this investment? Do they have any personal skin in the game? If it goes south, like Thirty Eight Studios.
Right. And it's it's tough because again, I have only very recently been um able to see these plans, but my understanding, um, which I'm going to continue to investigate and obviously report back to the coalition on this as frequently as I can because I do believe in disseminating like as much information as possible. I uh, I mean, that's why I do this job, right? Like, it's it's not only bringing the the voice of the people to City Hall, but also trying to translate information back. And I'm hoping, I've heard that thirty six million was earmarked strictly for you know, construction projects and infrastructure needs that Pawtucket does desperately need in that zone with the the way our roads are currently just just we've we've been kind of have been destroyed just through years of wear and tear and everything else. Um, but there's also the question of like, okay, if you are, if if the stadium itself, from what they have told me, the stadium, the um, residences, the that that district itself is going to be privately funded. Um, then why why isn't there more transparency into that process too? Because I think if my only shining light on this is that, you know, I was really excited to to see for the first time one of our local high school, high school girls soccer teams win the state championship. In a pandemic year, they excelled and were amazing. And so if there are athletes in Pawtucket or Providence or around here that could benefit from having professional resources available to them to move into some form of career in athletics, whether that's um actually being an athlete, whether that's coaching, whether that's uh, you know, physical therapy, whatever the case might be. New opportunities can come from that, but when you're talking just about the revenue that's going to be generated from it, who is going to get it? How it gets backstopped in the case of you know, not really um, being as successful as they would hope. being as successful as they would hope, these are the things, and this contingency planning is what I really wish this, both the city and developers would do a better job at explaining to the laypeople of Pawtucket, frankly, you know, people who don't understand why a stadium is getting built when we don't have permanent homeless shelter, and that, you know, people have been living in tents on that side of the river this entire winter. And when we've been trying to, you know, it's, for me, it's a question of priorities and also a question of again, you know, being told the truth about these things, not just saying like, you know, thank you for your time, thank you for signing off on this. There was no way I could have stopped it, you know? I could have chained myself to I-95 on both sides, and they still would have, like, there was no way by the time I got elected that I could have done anything to do it. So now, my whole goal is to figure out how, how can I finally get answers to these questions? Because it cannot be what happened in Worcester. And I, when I grew up, uh, we had a local baseball team that played at Ernie Shore Field. Thankfully, in Winston-Salem, they also had a university. And universities can be great at working on land projects or helping rehabilitate projects like that. And Pawtucket doesn't have a university, but if they did, maybe something could happen with McCoy. Maybe they could invest in building um places that, I mean, we lost three gems. Uh, they call the three gems of Pawtucket, the hospital, the Gamm Theater, and um oh gosh, what's the third one?
And the Paw Sox.
But Paw Sox, right? So what, what the pitch that they're giving me and giving us and trying to make this kind of a romantic project, I get it. That's PR spin. I understand what you're trying to do, and you're trying to build up excitement, but that still doesn't answer the basic question of why now?
Motherel.
Exactly. And that's kind of the thing all year with, with them being forced to listen to me at city council meetings, because it doesn't make sense why you just won't just answer these questions honestly.
That's a Shelbyville project.
You know, Shelbyville, it's right in the scene.
Right. You see, here's the big lie, and it is the big lie, and I've called out your mayor on a number of occasions. The first problem is there's been no transparency with this. This was a middle-of-the-night project, passed despite the overwhelming opposition of Rhode Islanders using tax money to, uh, to support this. You're gonna hear the term, maybe they've come up with a new term, because it's, you know, there's an entire buzzword factory, factory out there, and these private-public partnerships, as I like to call them, and it's called ancillary income. And, you know, I, I've I've spent years with economists talking about this. In fact, there's, interestingly enough, possibly one of the the leading experts on sports stadiums is a gentleman who, who is a in-tenured professor at the College of the Holy Cross. Uh, and he's come down to Rhode Island on our show a number of times to talk about the underlying fallacy of this. Of course, the, the irony being, of course, is that we drove them out of Pawtucket, now he can actually see the project from the College of the Holy Cross that he posed. And he's the head of the he's the head of something called the Journal of Sports Economics, uh, and, and ancillary income is the big lie. I'll tell you why. And the ancillary income is gonna be all the economic, I call it a halo effect, all the money thrown off by people coming downtown, uh, and they're gonna spend all sorts of money on this and that, and you know, it'll employ people. And how many times have you heard the term, good-paying union jobs? It'll encompass all that. Now, I, I don't doubt there's gonna be an impact based on the construction. There will be a temporary impact on that. And like all new projects, there will be a, a temporary fascination with it. You build a new restaurant, guess what? You know, you leave your favorite restaurant down the street, you try out the new one. And, and that, that'll have an impact. But ancillary income is fundamentally incompatible with the nature of the construction itself. What do I mean by that? These facilities are built to be self-contained. The whole point, for example, of an enhanced baseball stadium as opposed to McCoy, was that you were gonna build additional ways of monetizing the traffic going to the new stadium. And what I mean by that, you, 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 you put the steakhouse in for the, for the, for the bougie types, and you have the the little wine bar, or maybe you have the brew pub inside. And so the attraction is, the way that they increase their per-unit visiting expenditure, so right now, if a guy goes to McCoy, he probably spends, I don't know, 20 bucks a person, you know, the goal is to turn that into 100. And you do that by maintaining a self-contained facility, not unlike a casino or not unlike a mall, where everything you need is inside. That's why they do it. So the notion that, that the only thing that's gonna spin to the rest of Pawtucket is traffic, and that's if it's successful. I mean, if, if, if it's successful, you know, I, I work across the street from a major stadium. On game day, you know what we have to do? Shut down. Ask folks who went to the Democratic National Convention years ago when it was Boston. Everybody was gonna get a payday, right? Guess what? Everything got shut down. Um, so that's, that's the first problem. It's the big lie. The second issue, which to me is equally critical, is that particularly if it doesn't make the money, shockingly, right? It doesn't make the money it says it's gonna be. How far off, how, how far out has Worcester been pushed now, right? Because of the pandemic? You're actually, as, as a government, subsidizing through these superior terms that they're getting, using taxpayer money to subsidize the competition for the consumer dollar against existing businesses, who are basically working hard, paying taxes to subsidize their competition. Holy schnikes, is that what we want? You know, we, we've got this fragile, and, and God knows, Central Falls and Pawtucket have been devastated by the Rona, devastated. So the, the tragedy is, and particularly in the case of Central Falls, and I'm not faulting Pawtucket for this, but Central Falls downtown had been going through something of a renaissance itself. It was starting to become a destination for, again, what's downtown mean in America today? Entertainment. Great restaurants, local businesses. You could see it starting to happen, and then the Rona hit. So why would we ask, you know, we've got two other institutions in the state that behave this way, the two casinos. Why do we constantly subsidize out-of-state organizations to compete against our small business owners? It's morally wrong, it's morally bankrupt. And yet we do it. And we're shocked.
Yeah.
Shocked.
It's a it's, I, in my second city council meeting, you know, the, I had two public hearings in a row. And usually, you know, public hearings are uh one of the most exciting parts of working in city council. You have someone that wants to expand their business or establish a new one, and the community can come out and voice their concerns. And one of the businesses was a local restaurant that is sort of overlooking um where the stadium is going to be. It's on the uh, the east side of the river, kind of where the yarn factory is. I don't know if you know where that is on Division Street, but um I was excited for him because I'm like, this is a great place that I hope will become, you know, a restaurant where people come to and maybe stop first on the highway before kind of cruising into the new district, because if we don't work now uh really hard to get strong, small businesses built, established, and uh kind of building momentum before the stadium gets built, then exactly what you're saying is gonna come to fruition. There will be no competition. And then the district starts to expand itself, right? More other big businesses come in, buy out these other properties, and you no longer have a place that has the potential to organically grow. You instead have the outside investment coming in and just dropping the big bucks, because they now see how uh so-and-so did it with their store, or they have a friend who works at this corporation, and now they see uh new potential. And that's definitely what I want to prevent from happening, because um I don't I don't want to live in another place that feels like just a financial district. I want to live uh where I, I've never had a place where I can live that I can walk to, like a neighborhood restaurant or a neighborhood bar. Like, this is new for me. I uh, I chose Pawtucket because the potential for that, and I don't, I don't want to see these businesses driven out, and I don't want to see them crumble in the face of uh I, you know, I'm just thinking about the movie um You've Got Mail, right? I don't want You've Got Mail to happen here in Pawtucket. We gotta protect our local bookstores, literally Stillwater Books downtown. We gotta make sure they survive through this.
And, and they won't, and that's the problem because of two very basic rules. But go to any casino, go to, you know, go down to Baltimore, where they, years ago, they built that fancy uh baseball stadium, and walk around the neighborhood surrounding it. They're, they're deserts, economic deserts. Because business by definition is driven to those people, and the costs and the inconveniences, the downsides of having a big business in your neighborhood impact severely those businesses. You don't see any restaurants opening up around Twin River, do you?
No, and you never will.
Nope. Because you're competing against, and, and this is, let's use Twin River as an example, because it's, it's great on two levels. Part of the original vision of Twin River never included a hotel. And that was sort of a sop, if you will, that was thrown to people in the Providence downtown district, as well as a handful of hotel operators in the area. Because ultimately, you're using a monopoly on casino gaming to drive revenue, which can artificially subsidize both the risk and the cost of building a hotel property. Because what happens with hotel properties and restaurants and casinos? They're used as a way to operate, operate at an, you know, an artificially lower subsidized price to attract business in to that, the hope is that when you go in and you go to the steakhouse, and you have a swell night, you go downstairs and you drop 100 bucks or 200 bucks in a slot machine. And it happens, the formula that works, but it works for the casino. It does not work for the local businesses that have been in that area. It just doesn't. It, it, it's a gigantic sucking sound, where it takes, you know, good old H. Ross Perot, right? What's that sucking sound I hear? That's the money getting pulled out of the local economy. Now, now, let's all, so it, it, it just, it's, it's the big lie. And by the way, just also as an aside, since we're attacking everything, rumor has it that 20 miles up the highway, there's a major league soccer facility, right?
Yeah.
That is cooperated on a successful sporting facility. Did you know that in 2019, the full, the, the real full year before the Corona hit, that their actual attendance was down almost 9%? You've, you've got a truly a world-class facility 20 miles up the road, offering world-class soccer. And, and, and closer to Boston, so you can draw from Boston, it's actually got a train stop from Boston now, right? And they can't sell
The whole, like, the tailgating scene used to be great, like, and it was so much, I mean, you wouldn't pay what you pay to go to football, but you would have a great time.
Right. That's, that's going away. Consumer tastes are changing. So you, you, you look at the totality of the picture. All right, it's not gonna help downtown. Quite frankly, it's got the potential to devastate this emerging growth, these green, you know, people talk about the green sprouts, if you will, that are coming out of the economy. If, if you have the courage at this point that some of the people in downtown Pawtucket, all of them, but let's say the people who are opening new businesses, despite an international pandemic, then those folks are exactly what you want. They're paying their own way. One of, one of, one of, one of the great uh misconceptions about immigrant communities is, oh my God, they just take welfare money. Bobble loop. Some of the greatest energy in this state comes from the newly arrived. In terms of just the raw energy and the accumulation of small bits of capital to start their first-generation first business. Very often, it's restaurants, but it's so many other things as well. And that is what's quite frankly, driving the small business economy in the state. We constantly, we constantly talk about, well, Rhode Island small business, it's the backbone of the state, but we do everything we can to pillage and burn them. And a, a third state subsidized facility in the heart of two of the most financially challenged communities in the state is a recipe for disaster. It, it's, it's a failure on every single level, and, and it's, I'll get on my high horse in a second. I apologize, it was a third time tonight, right? But it's, it's an indictment of the current administration, who has consistently sought a silver bullet, if you will, for generations of economic neglect. That's what it is. It's to bail out a failed, in my opinion, not my guest, all right, she's the adult in the room right now, but a failed mayor with a failed vision, who on his watch, undeniably on his watch, as you put it, lost the three gems. And you could say what you want about the Paw Sox and their inability to get a stadium and greedy ownership, all right? Who quite frankly could have stroked a check. I mean, you had the former chairman of Fleet Bank and the former chairman of CBS. You think they could have gotten their own $100 million in financing? Yes, yes, I can. And so, you know, it, it's, but to me, what's equally troubling, or more troubling, is the loss of the Gamm Theater and the loss of the hospital, because that means you weren't paying attention. The Gamm Theater is a natural. I've, I, you know, unlike some people who talk about, well, it'd be great to have a theater here. I actually went to the Gamm, the Gamm Theater. I paid money for tickets at the Gamm Theater, all right? Just a dynamic organization who was meant for Pawtucket. I just, it just, it was such a neat part of that puzzle that you and I have been talking about now for an hour or so, that, that, that sort of art vision to drive the city. And the notion that somehow you have to, if you're the victim of a serious injury, have to either go to Sturdy or Rhode Island Hospital, is an atrocity.
Yep.
Just, you want to make a livable, and, and I, final you unleashed
I'm so sorry that I unleashed the dragon.
But you know what? There's this constant refrain of, well, people in Pawtucket want to be proud of their city. They want to have a soccer stadium. No, you know what makes people in Pawtucket proud? Having great schools, having roads that are paved. Driving down Newport Avenue and seeing lots of local businesses in those, in those gigantic strip malls, which are just terrible now. That's what makes people in Pawtucket proud. Having a fire department with, with great equipment and, and, and a uh, and, and the ability to respond. Being able to take your kid who may have broken a bone or something, God forbid, more serious, being able to take your kid downtown to a local hospital, to be treated by local folks, and not have to, you know, drive 10 or 15 or 20 miles in the middle of a medical emergency. That's, to me, what makes people proud of their town. And people in Pawtucket deserve to have a city to be proud of.
You're here. It's, it's, I, I used to, you know what, I, and I can finish on this too, because I was so excited when I moved here, because I could walk to the Gamm from my house. I went and I immediately got season tickets and went and saw, I think, uh, the first production I saw was The Importance of Being Earnest. And as an artist myself, I was like, this is great. You have a, an organization that not only puts on some of the finest regional theater I've seen in a long time, but they then have, you know, after-school programs. They can interact with our local Jaclyn Walsh High School, one of like the best arts high schools that we have in New England, that you know, it only has about 200 high school students, but they are incredible, and they don't get the credit that they deserve. But then when these play, they leave, and nothing fills these spots, they go vacant, rents rise, um and these investors come in and scoop up swaths of land and resell them five years later after painting a few walls or clearing some floors, then what, what will those graduates of Walsh High School have besides opportunities elsewhere, outside of Pawtucket, outside of Rhode Island? And it's not, it's not right, because um I did have to leave my hometown to kind of find uh, like, my way in life, and I, I don't regret it one bit, but I believe that my opportunity here in the city council is also to advocate for a place where folks don't have to leave, where they could find good jobs that don't require uh, a huge new facility to be built, but they can start their own small business. They can uh, join up and, and work in a co-op with another one. Their kids can find um, you know, have great school experiences. These are, like you said, these are the things that make communities not just live through a pandemic, but live joyously and courageously through it. And we're just trying to survive now, and we need to move into thinking about thriving as well as just surviving.
Right. Uh, you know, as an artist, you can appreciate the fact that neighborhoods in Pawtucket and Central Falls are literally 10 miles from arguably the finest, one of the finest art schools on the planet. And I've seen firsthand, one of the unique side effects of the pandemic is that more artists from RISD are staying local, because it's affordable, they can do their art, there's the opportunity for space, um, much more so, though, in Um, much more so though in, in cities considered, which wouldn't have been much more stylish a year ago, but are considered much more dangerous, like New York, like LA. And I don't doubt when this clears, there'll be some of those folks will, will actually go there. But there is a burgeoning arts community taking place right now as a reaction to COVID that I don't think would have existed a year ago. And I see that firsthand because I, I know people personally involved in it. And, and the opportunity to gain something out of this horror and to crystallize that into a plan and a program, I, 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 I take, um, great solace tonight, uh, in having this conversation with you because you get it. You, 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 you get it on every level. And, and that's not to say because you're going to always agree with me on these things, but you clearly understand the playing field here. And you're not, if you will, blinded by the politics of what you could call urban economic development of the seventies. And unfortunately, it's my personal opinion, not my guess, that that's exactly what's happening. We are trying to employ the same failed techniques that didn't work 20 years ago, didn't work three years ago, and fly in the face of a wonderful opportunity that exists for the city of Pawtucket. And it just means more efficient government, better government, trying to do the best you can with what you got. But at the same time, seeing to the advantages and the gifts that are literally being handed to us in real time as we speak. And, and instead of trying to find some, again, silver bullet from somewhere else, monorail, 76 trombones, whatever it is, let's focus on the advantages and, and the wonder that we have surrounding us. It's not that hard.
And let's not ever, uh, vote a venture capitalist into the highest office again because I've been a venture capitalist my whole life. And the name of the game in venture capital is take someone else's idea and, you know, bring in a consultant. Like, that is not the vibe of, of Rhode Island. We can do it ourselves. We have proven it. And we should get back to that because, oh boy, am I tired of, uh, just, you know, hire some guy type of attitude to get, to get these things done and silver bullet, uh, techniques. It doesn't work. And, um, I'm really glad to have had this conversation with you. I feel like the energy that you bring to the table and that, um, my community brings to the table, that is what, you know, helps me wake up in the morning and go fight these fights. Like, not literally fighting them, but it keeps me energized because I know there's a lot of people who think like us here. They just, uh, like we all do, need a bigger microphone, a better megaphone, something that helps get their voice actually heard. And, um, hopefully we can make change in that way, at least in Ward Four.
Absolutely. Um, I, I, listen, we, we ended up an hour and a half. The, uh, but, but you know what? Again, this is the beginning of a, probably a long conversation. There's going to be a lot of challenges. This is, this current project, there's going to be an attempt to just kind of ram it through. Um, listen, it, it, it may very well even be too late. But that doesn't mean that we can't impact it, that we can't make people aware of the risks. Um, because the, 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 the most critical part, and we'll save this conversation for next time because it's still developing, I'm still not even sure, I don't know if they've told you, where they're getting the other 200-plus million dollars. I, you know, we're, we're all ready to rip and, and, uh, you know, hello folks, uh, where's the money coming from? I, I, I just, I just don't know. And, and again, the fact that folks who are paying attention don't know. I get that, that urban planning and government and all this is just, at this point, offensive to a lot of people, never mind concerning. Uh, and so there's a tendency in the midst of all of this crisis that we're surrounded by, both nationally and locally, politically, in terms of our healthcare, there's just this, it, it, it's overwhelming to a lot of people. But that's why conversations like this are critical because there are those folks, I believe, who will take advantage of the fact that people not are unwilling, not are unable, but simply don't have the bandwidth to pay attention. And that's when, that's when bad things happen. And ask the people of Worcester that, how they're feeling. Not, not the, not the people you see on TV, not the guy who's the, you know, the town planner or the town manager or whatever, who's already, you know, you know, rolled the dice on, on 21 on this. Not them, but the average, you know, in New England, we call it a ham and eggger, and it's a term of respect. The average guy and gal, all right, who is, but working two or three jobs and can't believe they're going to end up spending a couple, a hundred million dollars to build a stadium that is a testament to a dying sport. And I'm a baseball fan. We got, we got to make, buddy, we got to make sure that doesn't happen in, in the bucket.
Well, uh, we'll keep trying and I'll keep coming back to talk about it. Um, so again, thank you for this first opportunity. I, I think this is the start of, uh, yeah, hopefully a really good way for me to at least, um, keep myself honest and keep these people honest who have, have their claws in, in the proverbial cookie jar as we speak. So.
There you go. Give me, I, I, I keep stumbling over the pronunciation of your last name. I'm sorry. It's Shutey, right?
It's Shutey. Yeah, you can think of it, uh, as like Shutey on duty or like, uh, that's what I tell people. Like, I wasn't RA in college, so I had to do rounds and I was on duty. I'm like, yeah, it's Shutey on duty time.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, Alexis Shutey, she is the councilperson for Ward Four of the great city of Pawtucket, Rhode Island, the city that has inspired artists, athletes, and a legion of bad poets. We've just spent the last hour and a half, you see how quickly it goes by, by the way, talking about the future, and I believe it's a grand future for the city of Pawtucket, but also I think addressing in a very forthright way its challenges. It's a beginning of a conversation that I think will last a long time. Contrary to public opinion and certain of our, certain leaders, these are not problems that are going to be overcome easily. But spiritually, the city has got, I believe, the right folks, the right ideas, the right skills. There's a lot of people in Pawtucket with superpowers. I think it's just a question for all of us to give those opportunity to, for those superpowers to flourish. We are the Coalition, loud and proud, outrage porn free, silly disobedient media broadcasting live on the worldwide Coalition Radio Network at coalitionradionetwork.com, facebook.com/thecoalitionradio, on the mighty, mighty Twitter at coalition underscore radio, and of course, our original mothership at coalitionradio.us. Uh, folks, uh, for us, small, independent broadcasting outfits like this, social media is, well, it's our mother's milk. We, we rely on it as a method to reach above the white noise of the conventional media, the vested media. In this case, the media that I'm just, I'm going to say my guess is too polite. The media that's going to make a whole lot of money if they get the soccer stadium built because of advertising, but I didn't say that in the middle of the meeting. The, but we ask you just to take a moment, if you like us on the Facebooks, follow us on the, on the Twitter, and any one of the number of 100 or so media platforms that I'm now going to find myself investing in over the next few weeks. Just, just give us a chance. Give us a listen. I think together we can all make a great difference. Have a wonderful night and we'll see you soon.